So we are Screen 360 TV. Had you a chance to take a look at the MVP?
Yeah, in fact, I was on the call on Monday when you did your first presentation. So I think I understand the gist of it.
Oh, good, good. And I'm glad that that came across in that presentation. We asked you here today to understand about networking big and what some of the obstacles are, networking internationally, what some of the obstacles that you've encountered are, and how to stay as simple as possible, stay as simple as a child in Spain wanting to Skype with his grandmother on a weekly basis in the United States, as simply as that. Your thoughts, please?
When you say networking, because I work in the networking industry, I need to know if you need like people networking, like social networking, or networking like from a tech perspective?
Oh, good question. Well, I want to say both and, yes, and because it is ultimately the network that we want to build on, the network of people, but they have to be connected technically. And right now, we're using Zoom and as well as Whereby, which are both video conferencing systems. And it might be in the future that, you know, one idea was to be the pet philanthropy of Zoom or of Whereby, and I've been working with them both. Neither one has come forth, Whereby more, but we might need to be our own in the future. But how can we stay scaled modestly so that we can manage it? Or do we have to just let it take off and keep running after it?
Well, I mean, there are so many platforms out there for video conferencing. I would definitely advise against ever trying to design your own. It's a big, complex, heavy lift, and you'd never get the return on your investment.
Thank you.
Because there's so many tools out there that are already like borderline public domain. And yeah, so you'll have no shortage of potential platforms. There's Google, there's Amazon Chime, there's, it's just such a long list. That will be, that will be free forever, I think, for the most part.
Okay, that's good, good use of it. What about the, I guess, the issues from country to country? I know that Germany has more stringent protections. And, you know, about five years ago underwent a huge evolution in that sphere and in protections.
Yeah, there's different, different personal privacy protections. I think it's called GDPR. You'll have to Google it. It's been a while since I've looked at it, but there are, there are regional data protection and regulatory compliance often, although not always, the platform that you choose will also have already addressed those regional compliance needs. So that could be one advantage of going with a mainstream video platform like Zoom or, you know, Google or Amazon or WebEx. They already thought through that.
Yeah.
The data that you obtain beyond that, like customer records, those, I think, will be your responsibility to maintain and compliance.
Right.
And sometimes, sometimes that can be addressed by, you know, by the public cloud infrastructure that you use. Like, so for example, if you set up your, your company and you're starting to collect, you know, customer data, it'll probably sit in like an Amazon or a Google or a Microsoft public cloud infrastructure. Then you just want to make sure that they're also adhering to the same types of compliance. And, you know, I'm sure that they're very stringent about that.
Yes, we will be archiving not only customer data, emails and such. And so far, we've been collecting them on a Google survey. And, and, but we will be archiving and archiving, I guess, archiving in the cloud has been advised, archiving. What's, what's best? I mean, how do we, the Amazon services, what is A, what is it?
AWS.
AWS. AWS, thank you, AWS. I guess, is that what everybody is using and that's the safest or?
It's pretty much the default. That's like the safe choice. Google and Microsoft both have, you know, competitive infrastructure. You just think of what they do as like, you know, in the old days, everyone would buy their own, you know, infrastructure, like their own servers and their own storage and networking gear. And then increasingly, you know, public cloud providers like Amazon have just made it really easy to have the benefits of all that infrastructure, but to only pay for it as a service. And so you only pay for what you use and really reduces the complexity.
How, I could just, just could just imagine something like that breaking down. How easy or how hard is it for the cloud to?
Yeah, almost never. It's engineered for super high reliability. So it's, it's about as reliable as anything you can think of.
Is that universally agreed upon? Did we have a UN in the cloud and everyone shook hands?
Oh, it's, it's better than the UN. It's greedy capitalists. The Azos and Associates.
Okay, okay, okay. They figured it out, but. And, and, and there, there are people trying to hack at it all the time. Isn't that right?
For sure. But like, if you look at, like at a video platform like Netflix, for example, you know, they run their whole infrastructure on AWS.
Yeah.
So I'm not, I'm not sure who Zoom is running on. I think they recently made an announcement that they didn't go with AWS.
Oh.
There's a lot, a lot of choices out there. What about on the, on the customer side? Are you zooming in on the customer segment and the value prop?
Yes, yes. And, and we have done a lot of certainly interviews with teachers who are, of course, shifting their lives and would very much appreciate having curriculum and materials that are packaged and are easy to use and that work on very contemporary issues like race and society that their students are dealing with. Some of the audience members that we desire, like those people in rural areas. We've had one interview so far where we recognized that things that are considered political, which unfortunately are race, we're going to have to find very astute ways of getting around that. Because, and, and letting them know that that is part of the divide that they're fighting against. And, and so informing their children and letting their children catch up to their peers, their international peers, near and far, because this is what we recognize is, is that young audiences, or young people born into the world today have more possibility to influence each other than ever before because we are connected. So let us work with that. And the pandemic and the racial awakening that we're having in the United States has sparked a lot of empathy, not just looking in on the United States, but looking in on themselves and looking back and forth. So I think there is a, there is a thought in the zeitgeist. There is a lot of crossing happening right now. And we can, we want to work with that and connect young people internationally. You know what, Jack? We do need to talk to more young people. And I'd like to get my niece on, actually, who's been protesting daily, and, and that would be valuable. I mean, in our customer segments, we've been talking about teachers and administration, talking to, getting to them, and we decided that they make the decisions for young people. But I think if we, if we take a cue from Parks, it was Parkside in Florida, and Fridays for the Future, young people are going to be demanding more because they see their peers demanding more. We hope for that, and we should plan for that. And with our each one, teach one thinking, we want peers to reach out to each other and inform them. And that's a lot of what's happening now. So I think we would be wise to, to harness that energy and that demand to understand and to connect with global peers and start forging relationships for a more astute global stewardship. Oh, that's the first time I said it.
To be specific, like, we started out, our customer segment was kind of really wide because we were looking at film studios, teachers, students, administrators. And then we realized through doing more interviews, we kind of narrowed it down to teachers and administrators, because administrators, at the end of the day, create the curriculum and tell school districts what, what do they need to do in order to teach their students? And we realized if we tailor these movies to AP themes and core curriculums, we could convince administrators to have Screen 360 and license it into their classrooms. So, and, and also, we're talking to teachers because if a lot of teachers are on board, they have a lot of swing as to what the districts, you know, kind of incorporate into their curriculum. So if teachers, you know, that's how a lot of things get developed into, you know, schools is that the teachers kind of all rise together. And so we're, we're talking to both right now, and we've kind of narrowed it down. And when looking at our value proposition, the gains achieved are providing immersive curriculum and materials for authentic cross-cultural education to basically stop the isolation, which breeds xenophobia and racism. And the pains relieved is the isolation, like we said, is being relieved by creating international peers near and far, that's our slogan, and also providing curriculum that adhere to Common Core standards and AP themes, which we think international films could really, could really tailor to. And the themes are families and communities, global challenges, science and technology, and temporary life, personal and public identities. Those are the four AP themes this year, which I think films could, could be very powerful to kind of teach students those themes. I think it kind of works really well. So that's what we're working on is a curriculum. And we've also realized that homeschooling is on the rise. And we've talked to a lot of, or some parents that are homeschooling their students. And they said, this would be huge if you could get it into some homeschooling hubs across the country, maybe get it piloting and see if parents really like it to create, you know, culturally sensitive children for the workforce.
There we are. Nice, Jack.
Yeah. It's a nonprofit?
Ah.
That's what we're trying to figure out. We're trying to figure out. Craig, our mentor, said, maybe starting out as a nonprofit would be beneficial because filmmakers, I mean, you would get, we could gain more donations and make more money that way. But we're, we're trying to figure it out. We don't know if we should go the other route and try to, you know, pitch to investors or if we should just stay in the nonprofit.
Yeah. Let me tell you just briefly where it has been. I've had brick, I have developed brick and mortar film festivals, and those were nonprofit projects. So Screen 360 TV continued as a nonprofit project. That said, we were offered 250,000 venture capital matching fund. And so became a corporation. So Screen 360 Inc. is a corporation, and we have equity and pro forma. And we intend to license access to Screen 360 TV. That's the business model at this point. But really, I mean, I'm seeking team, seeking team members and investors and a way to plant a cornerstone to, to build the network. So it's both a social network as well as the technological network. So then we can build on top of that, the other things, the other revenue streams that we've designed.
Yeah, the, the business model is certainly important, knowing whose pain you're solving, what they would pay, and how many of them you feel like you could get. And then if you think about that leaf diagram, what are the competing methods that might already be at least partially addressing the same pain point that you're focused on?
Yes.
You know, for example, why not just offer a curated playlist on Vimeo or YouTube?
Which is basically what we're doing now through the pandemic. We've been showing films three times a day.
And so that, and that, that could be a form of MVP that would allow you to get around some of the complex licensing negotiations and content, content acquisition costs that you might have to grapple with and see if you can cultivate a following of your target customers by giving them access to a really carefully curated curriculum and playlist that might also have a social networking component, but basically leveraging, you know, public domain content as a way to experiment with the hypothesis on your value prop.
That's exactly what we've been doing from April to April, May. And I have to say, there was a lot of competition with, with teachers first because they had to flip their classrooms very quickly. So that's when we had a burst of interest was right when schools shut down. And so I quickly put it up. And then the week or two weeks following, school started up again. And so attention was focused on regular school again. So we, we lost people. And I kept it going with the build it and they will come idea and, and just keeping it out there and developing it. But there has not, quite honestly, been a lot of uptake. It would take a large, first a pilot and then a large marketing plan.
There's just so much free stuff out there. It's, on one hand, it's, it's, it's amazing what you can watch for free, like, you know, anything from PBS Video to, you know, God knows what and everything between. It's, there are a lot of really interesting content out there already. It sounds like part of what you're offering is a kind of curriculum solution. And the other part is a part, is it like a curated list of, of material that's designed to sort of engage and elevate the thinking of your audience? Which is a super, super noble aspiration. How to, how to cut through the noise and, and become, in essence, a brand that drives preference for eyeballs and time is, I think, one, one important problem you might need to solve before you can get to the funding or the monetization question.
Well, is that not just time? I mean, we, we've looked at both having a studio, having live studio audience and broadcasting in from other locations in the world. I think, but that is also coordination heavy. And once we have our center, it can happen. Single events to draw more, where there is more marketing effort put in to draw more people. Single events could develop that audience base as well. I agree with you. I mean, brands, but yet, here's an opportunity. How else might one go about it? It's just, but standing by and holding, holding the place and continuing to offer.
One, 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 one model you might look at as you consider, you know, the route to market for your ideas, think about TED, you know, they have TED Talks, you have TED conferences, you have curated playlists from, from TED. They, they know that their audience is a certain type. I think in some ways, if you, if you consider your business model and said, well, what if we took that type of approach? It's a mix of your carefully vetted, you know, TED, having carefully vetted presenters who give a 15-minute TED Talk. In your case, you're talking about a carefully vetted list of films. But what you have in common is potentially an altruistic motivation, maybe a nonprofit structure. And then it's about how you develop the content and get it in front of your audience in a way that keeps them coming back and.
Sure.
Yeah. TED, TED, TED has sponsors, like they have commercial sponsors to give little, you know, commercial, then they, I think they also have people to donate and Patreon type, you know?
Yeah, Patreon is something that I've looked at, but I have not taken the time to look at it deeply. And it looks really, really smart. Um, I'm, I'm wondering, and I had this question for Craig, our mentor, too. So for film studios, he says, they, their objective is just, is to make money for tech, tech companies. Their objective is to continue to make money. In this pandemic, though, how are they seeing their way to support the recovery? I mean, you're here as a mentor, but would your company innovate some way to involve something like Screen 360 TV as, as an innovation wing or as a, as a? And, and this is what I thought perhaps movie labs would, would be interested in for Screen 360 TV to be, you know, a little, a side test area for small screens for how they could work in education. That's the question.
Most companies, like, like the company where I am, have a CSR, corporate, corporate social responsibility.
Right.
And many of them have made, you know, public commitments to, to COVID campaigns in various ways. So there's two ways they, they operate those CSR teams. One is through direct cash contributions that come, you know, from the company's treasury and get funneled to certain target causes. And the other one is through encouraging their employees to, to dedicate volunteer hours to those organizations, always nonprofit organizations. So there's, those are two ways we could potentially try to appeal to those wallets and those hearts and minds.
Yep. Salesforce is a good example. Yeah.
There's other, as a minute, a minute ago, I talked about YouTube and Vimeo and some of these other existing domains where a lot of this material may already be available. Then there's also potential content partnerships with, with a Netflix or an iTunes or, or, you know, their equivalents internationally. They may have a certain allocation or a window where they'd be willing to allow content from their catalog to be downloaded on a promotional basis or a nonprofit basis. Maybe there's a way you could use your playlists and your cultivated community as a way to bring an audience to those platforms. And exchange, they give your audience preferential access or, or, you know, 90-day free trial because of their affiliation with, with your group.
Yeah, oh, sure. That's, yeah, that's a, that's a great idea.
Acquisition and hosting and licensing of content, I think, is too heavy a lift for where you guys are at this stage. But curating the content, appealing to the audience, organizing the demographic, and then connecting them with the, the material seems to me the essence of your model.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. That, that is it. I mean, acquiring new content is also something I do, but I think I have to find new ways. It was going to film festivals and actually meeting filmmakers and, and asking them for their, their rights. But now it's going to be integrating with film archives and film institutes, for instance, and distributors directly. And, and so that is also the way. I think that's, that's really great insight. And the CSR is, is something that I often forget about. So thank you for that reminder. Jack, have you got any questions?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, you touched on it a little bit, but how exactly would you say we should market Screen 360 to get more people engaged, more teachers or customers engaged? How would you market it?
I'll give you my opinion. It's just an opinion, right? You know, put it, put it on the list. It sounds to me like you're a mission-driven organization. And I think it starts with being able to express that mission very concisely and be able to say how you, unlike other, you know, unlike other organizations, you execute your mission in a way that is valuable and unique. If you can crystallize that, that's, that, that statement, then I think it's an exercise in taking your mission-driven approach to the right target demographic. I think homeschools might be an interesting one there. You know, it might not be your, your ultimate goal, but often, you know, it's about going from a stepping stone approach.
Yes. Yeah.
And I think they'd be generally receptive to the idea of, you know, an international curriculum. It's maybe also a little bit off the mainstream. Cracking the public schools, I would probably make that like among the last.
Yeah, unfortunately, yes. Right.
I'd go homeschools, then maybe private schools, and then like international schools, you know, like schools that offer international accreditation. So like the American School in, in, you know, Lebanon or, or Shanghai or, you know, you know, Croatia. They're, they're a really interesting demographic, too. State Department schools that run overseas could be another kind of a niche.
Yes, and military schools, we discussed that in our last conversation, right?
Yeah, it's a big, it's a big demographic and probably wildly underserved.
I think you're right. Yeah. Wow. Good. That's. I, I wasn't aware of State Department schools, but with, are those different from military schools?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, they're, when, when we send, you know, people overseas, they, they have to go to school somewhere. And so sometimes it's a, it's a, it's a US institution, like a state department school. Other times, we'll be sending our diplomats to some accredited local school that, you know, is, you know, deemed reliable.
Sure. Yeah, JFK in Berlin, for instance, is a school that I've worked with. Yeah, yeah. Okay, good.
Maybe, maybe consider like a series of concentric circles where you start with the core, you test your message, your value proposition and your business model, and then you think about where the gradual expansion might lead.
That's very nice. I think this is one of the forms in the marketing opportunity navigator that we, we need to get to yet still, Jack. Okay.
They're really, they're really good for structuring the thinking, which is an important part, given the short fuse.
Yes, right, right, right. It's so, so true, so true. Well, Chris, we'd love to let you know how Screen 360 TV continues. And I imagine you'll be there on Friday if we're one of the ones who gets to present. But great.
Is, is there anyone else you, you'd think we, we should contact to get feedback from, Chris?
In my rolodex, I don't have many of the, of the types of folks who I think would be a good match for what you're looking for, but I'll, I'll be listening in. I'm lurking on all the sessions and available. So if something crossed my mind, I'll let you know, but nothing, nothing top of mind springs to.
Okay, okay. That's, that's great. Thank you, thank you. And, and it looks like a really sunny day where you are in that really cool.
This is my office in Mountain View, but I'm not in it right.
Looks great. Okay, Chris. Well, thanks very much for all of your input. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Enjoy it, learn and just receive all the good stuff that's coming. He Blake is a legend.
I know, right, right? Did you have him in school also when you were?
I know, I, I've met him through other professional associations, but he's like the Steven Spielberg of startups. I mean, I don't think people can understand who, who he is.
I've, I've overheard people in coffee shops talking about him.
He's top tier, for sure.
Yeah, no, we're happy, happy that we can work with him. Okay, thanks, Chris. Bye-bye. Okay, bye-bye. Want to stay on, Jack? Great.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was great. A lot of, a lot of good feedback. Wow.
Yeah, but it's really fascinating because especially, he's a tech guy and he doesn't hear, he doesn't hear the for-profit possibility. He sees, hears nonprofit. He says, this is not my world. And so, and, and it's, and it's soft skills and, but yes, it's true. And, and the mission. but yes, it's true. And and the mission is true. I I mean, I I should, yeah. The mission.
I think that TEDx is comparing it to TEDx is very interesting. And how we basically, I mean, they carefully vet, you know, people to give talks and we carefully vet, or you carefully vet different.
Filmmakers. This is what I'm thinking. Yeah.
Yeah, and then you get sponsors and donations like they do. It was interesting how he framed that for sure. I don't know. He said a lot of interesting things and and he also said that maybe homeschooling would be a good place to start.
You know what? I I'm just gonna throw this out here, brainstorm. So it is a show. And I've always imagined Screen 360 TV is having an audience, studio audience, as I mentioned, it'd be a show with a host. Originally, my friend who was a trapeze artist, we come in on a trapeze and land with two kids. And so we're hosting with two kids and the two of us. And then we bring in all of these other places that are watching together. We all watch the same film together and the filmmaker comes on and we talk with the filmmaker afterwards. That could kind of happen here. We invite a filmmaker on, he shows the film and people come. That would be the draw. If we get the filmmaker on, I have a filmmaker who's and and we have a couple of other filmmakers. Let's let's test that. And 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 test the the show. Test, test, test that. And I think we should start to test and we should be building. Dee Dee will come on here pretty soon. I think we should be building our deck as we're talking. Let me share that.
And and I think that's why I really wanted to speak with Leonard Maltin because he's taught the the most famous class at USC for years now. And the whole the what makes it so popular is that he brings on the directors and the actors and you get to ask them questions. And I think that's such that's so appealing to to students, especially who aspire to be filmmakers or or who just want to learn about different cultures. It's so cool to to hear the director's opinion and his vision come to life. And I think that adds so much to it. If you could if you could get the directors of these international films, it'd be very cool.
Well, that that is was the design. And that's the design of the film festival that the filmmaker is there. Now, if we so we probably wouldn't be able to do that regularly, but once a month, you know, something like this, we have one guest and we work up to their film. And that it's easier on us because it's one month, once a month and we're working and that we could probably get a lot of support for. And that person is interviewed. We have a kid on interviewing and then we have other kids interviewing from around. So I I've always, except in my regular life, I don't have kids, but there always should be a kid beside us when we're talking about children. You know, and that's why that's why I don't like just teachers and and separating them because I think these decisions should be made with with young people as well. And and my my niece, my niece just asked me, so what do you want to interview me about? We'll try and get her up here. She is 20 years old, no longer a teenager, but she has been testing with me on Screen 360 TV since she was, I think, nine or something like that, I understand it. And so she's she's aware of it. So let's let's test that idea, test the show idea when the filmmaker comes up. And
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe we make it kind of like a show and maybe I could get some kids on.
And I'm interested, I'm interested to hear what Pamela Douglas has to say about it, too.
Yeah, you know.
She might have some ideas and she, I know she works in television, but maybe we could shows too. I don't know if you're open to that.
That's I'm up, super up for that. Maybe we if we can do it this afternoon and just get a, let's see what if he Oh, that was you. Oh, she's waiting. Oh, oh. Hi, Dee Dee. Sorry about that.
It's okay, it's okay.
So I'm just writing to my niece. So we were just talking about the need to talk to some students about what they want to learn right now. And and Jack and I just had a nice chat with Chris Stiles and he suggested the TED Talk model. The Screen 360.
That's nice.
The Screen 360 TV has always thought that it would have a studio audience. And maybe you saw that in some of the media that we'd have a studio audience and talk with the filmmaker, of course, they would they would beam in. And it could be, it could be a workshop where we're helping the filmmaker get feedback from the kids and that's part of the idea. So I'm thinking if the the film is done or if it's not done, they just want to get the audience of them.
Right, right. That's a great idea. That's a great idea.
We're talking about how we can maybe test that and show it to Jack's teacher who is a television person.
Oh, fabulous, fabulous.
Yes.
So are we preparing for tonight or what are we doing right now?
Yes.
Yeah, we should start that, yeah.
Right. And we we have a two o'clock and a 2:30. We have a what do we have? Do we have a two? Let me look at the schedule.
What time is Regina?
Regina is 2:30. And Elizabeth Kavanaugh, a mom and a nurse, is on at three.
Okay.
So you can.
What do you know what time our office hours are tonight?
Oh, haven't looked yet. Four o'clock. I haven't.
I don't think we got an email yet, actually.
Ah, okay. Let me see. I'm gonna, I've got my niece on the line right now. I want to quickly give her a schedule. Thingy. Can you see? Oh, that's scheduled. Sorry, I don't want to distract from that. Copy link. And here is our day three. Can you see day three, Dee Dee?
I can I can see, I can see the teacher. I don't know if I see day three.
Okay, I just started to I just I moved over day or our cover and our key partners. I kind of want to I want to talk about film, I want to cross out filmmakers enough or film studios because we pushed Craig about that today. And how do I, I want to just add a a cross on that or something. How do I do that? I'll just use a text box. Yeah. And have you, I've got the list right here. Have you been able to make contact with these guys with our the mentors?
No, I texted. Did you want me just to use your your letter? And I didn't know whether it should be coming from you and we all sit in on it or how we should do that. Do you want me, I could reach out to them, but I thought your intro letter was really perfect. And so I didn't know whether we should just use that.
Yeah, use use it, use it. And thank you for thinking it's perfect. Perfect is hard to get to. And yeah, Matt Prusak, I'd love to be on that conversation with Matt Prusak, the healthcare guy. Oh. And also the FEMA people should said we should reach out to Ryan Peter Molly.
I, yeah, I reached out to all three of the mentors and I got a response from Michael this morning.
Oh, good.
He said he would like to call later, discuss later today.
Okay.
Okay.
He said, a very interesting topic, but not exactly my area of expertise. Please call me later today to discuss.
Yeah, so we just you just sort of like we asked Chris today. So people who not you don't have it in their wheelhouse. How do you think about it? Really? How do you think about it? And would it, how would it affect your life? Yeah, okay. Let me put this on for me and see and get Ryan.
Is that day three? Is that in the Google Drive? I don't see it.
You don't see it?
Or did you just make it separate?
I just make it. Oh, do I need to share it with everybody? Whoops.
Well, yeah, because I don't think it's in the drive.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. Okay, really nice conversation with Caitlin Jedrazek. And she brought brought her colleague Logan on and they both work with FEMA and they could see how it could be community community building, used for community building. And that's really great. Okay. Huh. So let me just make sure this is shared with you guys. Oh, it doesn't show. Yeah, okay. There you go. And Dee Dee. As far as the two people that I wrote to about joining the team. I saw that one, the MIT guy came on and he tried to get into Screen 360 TV and there was no one there, so didn't I and he hasn't written back to me. Maybe it's not sexy enough for him. Okay.
He tried to get on
Yeah, he tried to get into Screen 360 TV to thinking that he could see something on demand. So that caused caused me to adjust it to say, and I said, you're here, you're on Screen 360 TV for a scheduled event. Click here for a scheduled event. So they will look at the schedule and the program. And so I recognize that my wording might not have been clear enough. So I prompted that. Okay. So let me just do a call out here.
So I do have two interviews, one tomorrow and one Friday morning with the two filmmakers. And so Katie, sometime I would really like you to let me know what it is that we should be asking the filmmakers, since their role is totally different in this, you know.
Okay.
Process.
Let's talk about that very quickly. Would they would they appreciate a revenue share? Would they appreciate the audience and developing, you know, perhaps developing more, developing specifically for this audience? Have they learned from this audience before? What have they learned from this audience? So it's it's both developing them and asking what they need.
Developing, developing the films for this audience.
Developing, developing their interest in the audience. If so first, I think you would talk about their audience. And maybe this is a conversation we could have also early in the earlier in the morning before. Because right now I want to focus on this and
So my my first one is at 6:00 AM your time, so. I don't think you want to do that.
Okay, why don't you think about some things? Because in your experience as a film curator, you have engaged with filmmakers and their needs. So think about those and then present them. Then we'll talk about them.
Right.
So how this would benefit them.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, ah, here we are, text color.
And then tomorrow, Pam Douglas interview.
At 11?
At 11:00 AM Pacific time, if you both want to join.
Do definitely want to join.
She's a TV, teaches international TV and she's in the academy. Yeah, that should be really interesting to discuss. And then on Friday at 1:00 PM, Helena Kula Burke, who's a film fellow at Stanford, and she's studying international film and she was MITA at USC. That's at 1:00 PM on Friday.
1:00 PM on Friday.
Right. I have that in my schedule, too. That's good. Okay.
And I just, Shelley Hopkins emailed me back and gave me a bunch of referrals to teachers she wanted me to reach out to. So I just emailed all of them. I'll see if they respond. I also emailed some principals of schools and Michael, I don't know when we're gonna gonna talk with Michael, but I'll see where that goes.
Okay, how about this? This is film studios only, but how do they contribute?
What are we doing right now? Sorry.
Back to the
Oh, the canvas, yeah.
The canvas, yeah. So we want to talk about our our tests and changes. So film studios money only, but they that doesn't.
Well, I, yeah, I think that tonight the focus is on, where did it go?
Do you have that out, Dee Dee? That'd be great if you guide us.
Okay, so the customer segment. Okay, so we definitely tonight, we do need to, slide three is about our customer segment. And so this is what you're doing right here, right?
Right. And you've you've been building, you've been building a scenario or a persona, right, Dee Dee? That's what we talked about this morning.
Can you define persona for me, please?
Persona, the archetype. So the, we talked about the cultural geography teacher.
Customer archetype, yeah.
Customer archetype. So or or and using the German film, for instance. I could tell a story about a test with the German film.
So when we say that this archetype, are we talking about, you know, the kinds of teachers in particular that we've been like zeroing in on or?
Well, you know, that's that's Craig's word archetype. I wanted to say a user. So we've gone out and and talked to a lot of teachers. We can kind of create an archetype of a teacher. So we would call it a composite persona in in design thinking. So based on what we have learned from our interviews, what that person needs. So a bit about you know, the that they are really interested. And so let's build that person now. I mean, John was a really great example, but you also had an example and I'll bring those ones forward.
Excuse me. But it basically it is, you know, like we have a little clip of John, I don't know what we've got of John here, but basically it's we've talked to a lot of teachers, we've heard repeatedly, you know, this is what they want, right? This is they they they're interested and these are their needs, correct? And identify those needs. Is that, that's our customer, correct?
Something something like we saw the, was it the first group or the second group who presented? Well, it was the first group that presented yesterday. And Craig was delighted to see that all of the customers were there. So I would say that we
Well, the customer stories yesterday.
The customer stories. And this is what we've learned from. And one decision that we've made is that we're going to we we believe that teachers are it. So we're going with teachers, but we also want to get some of our saboteurs, which could be the students, right? The students could say, no, this is, we we want something that is we don't, we don't want a story that's just a film that is taking our, just filling the the hour. We want something that's now, you know, so that's why I think we should speak to some students.
Yeah, and I think I think here you should definitely introduce Finding Felix because he was a student, right?
He was, well, yes. And he, right. And we can show his, a clip of him saying films tell you.
Right. I think you should put that slide in here, too.
Okay. Great, thank you. Thank you. That's good. So Jack, are you are you going back and forth or I'll I'll do that. Let me get that. Because we didn't talk. So this is the one. Maybe I'll just take. Cuz we didn't talk, so this is the one, maybe I'll just take, uh, one. So let, uh.
I think if we were going to make a graphic of some sort, as far as like our customer segment and these teachers. I think that, um, the insights we get from them, right, that we've gotten from them, um, is what we're speaking about, I'm guessing.
Yeah, I think we should, I think we should take like, I, I know I didn't have time to do this, but I think powerful quotes from all of our interviews and put them on one slide would be very effective.
I do too, I do too. So therefore, I think that we could, um, like, let's say for instance Gordon Jack, okay, Gordon Jack, who asked, you know, as we were speaking, well, he was the one that said the teachers drive access, correct? I mean, they drive the curriculum, the teachers.
Did he say that? And Scott also said that, really?
Who?
Was backed up by Scott Sullivan. So here we go. So let's use this page and, and teacher said, we can use some pictures and say teacher said, right?
Right.
Teacher said.
Just, just quotes. I don't think it says teacher said, you know, but.
All right, but go ahead, and, and a couple of pictures and some quotes. You wanna work on that, Jack? And I'm gonna go up here and change because the 504 was not good today. So total interviews today, um, cuz Craig said, and I don't know about asking.
I think you should keep the 504 because they all.
Well, I, well, he said a footnote, make it a footnote, right?
Make it a footnote?
He said make it a footnote.
Let's use total class, okay, here we go. Interviews today, total class interviews and total interviews for, okay?
Yeah, there we go.
Class interviews to date. Class interviews, okay.
You could say, yeah.
Class total.
Yeah.
Okay, total interviews to date, yeah, okay, so today, we are looking at 1, 2, 3, 4. Let's think. Right, 1, 2, 1, 2, 3, 4, yeah.
Right, yeah. Oh, we've got, yeah, that's right, we've got two more still, right?
Yeah, did, okay, good, total, total class. And, uh.
So is that 20, no, it's more than 24, right? Didn't we have 20 the first day? No, second?
I'm gonna go back to that list.
I think, yeah, it's 24 cuz we had 20 yesterday, yeah.
Yeah, and that actually worked really well, that, um, when we, when I was moving to the other list, we talked about them and got the insights out. So let me bring that up again, and I will take it out of that. All right. And that was yesterday's, right, okay? And I'm going to our main list, which is here. Oh, come along now, come along, come along, come along. There we are. Okay. Yeah, oh my God, I could have three screens at the same time, amazing. Um, okay. So day two, here we are, day three, friends, oh my goodness.
You know, it's crazy. It's unfortunate, I mean, it's good that it moves fast, but it's, it's, it looks like it's a really good class to take.
I know, and, and just think about all of those, those experts that we can still talk to. Jack, did you say you reached out to Brian Petromali, Petromali?
Um, are you talking about the mentors? I reached out to Yaddish, Michael and Glenn.
Okay, uh, they want us to reach out to Ryan about licensing. How, how would it look to work with? So that's really good. They, they gave us some really nice feedback. They said it was one of their favorite ones of all the lists. They went through all of the, the challenges and this was one of their favorite ones. Okay, um, so we're going to be, we'll have Regina. And they got back very quickly, both of these mentors, so if I ask them later on, not interfere with our tasking here.
Well, what was the best quote from Alyssa Nizelli?
Okay, I'm looking for it right now, okay.
Okay. Okay. Oh, I didn't get a chance to put them on here yet. All right, this was. All right, Jessica 2. Caitlin Jetzick. Oh, great, that's not, is it? Oh, there it is, good, good, good. Caitlin Jetzick. Okay, okay, interviews, Katie Dee Dee. Okay. Good, and then Chris Stiles. Jack, um, okay, community builder.
I don't remember the best quote, Marhanic, he said, he said so many good things, I forgot what the most.
Wait, you know what was, was, what pained him, one of his pain points was being um, an affluent school and there was a struggling high school, a public high school down the street. And so that really connected with the each one teach one and the sister cities, sister, pardon, so that was a big one.
Oh my God, Lisa had a really good quote, you think I can?
Well, let me see, you might have given it to us already, let's not take, uh, let's see.
I think I, I had a different note pad for that one, I think that's what happened. One of the things that she said that, you know, that this fit perfectly with her school district because the mission of her school district was cultural literacy. That was definitely one of the, the driving pieces.
So the mission of our school district was cultural literacy?
Yeah, yeah, right, cultural literacy, yes. And, and obviously, you know, promoting communication skills, which she felt this was right up that. And she felt that it, it definitely 100% was a way to break down barriers.
Recorded. Yes. I haven't gotten that up yet. Oh, shoot.
Is there some way that we can, like, instead of putting the quotes like in a box, can we like, you know, like, paste them around the slide, you know, so they stand out just a little bit?
I think that's a great idea, yeah, I'll, I'll do that right now.
What do you mean, like in quotes as, like in bubbles? How about in bubbles? Use, use speech bubbles?
Right, anything besides like a block like this, you know?
Yeah.
I could tell Jack had to do a lot of these, and you're doing a lot of these for school now too, right, Jack? Did you, did you use them in high school as well as college?
Yeah, we use this a lot in high school, yeah.
I think it's fantastic, I mean, like your generation, for heaven's sakes, it's like, I'm so jealous. It's like, huh, it's a piece of cake for you. It's like, for me, it's like, I don't know.
Did you notice too, Dee Dee, sorry, Dee Dee, did you notice too in our interview earlier with Caitlin and Jared or Logan? That they did not respond to the kids at the border?
I absolutely did, I was, yep. It, it just, see, that's the whole thing, it validates the fact that you don't get an opportunity, a very small segment of the population has access, you know, to this kind of, you know, experience. And so therefore, international films just doesn't happen. It doesn't hap, they don't get to see it unless somebody, you know, they have to, unless they have to.
Oh, oh, right, well, that especially, I couldn't, couldn't present an international film, but that, that he grew up with two parents who were in the Peace Corps, that's another experience. That's an experience like Ambassador's kids would have, you know, that, that they did have a cultural awakening like that and presenting. So that's, that's very interesting. Uh, but no, I, I asked if they do, if FEMA addresses issues, emergency issues like kids at, the kids at the border. And I think that is a homeland security area and they may not be working in it.
Are you kidding me? That's the last thing, there, there's no way they're gonna do anything like that. FEMA's, no, Homeland Security's not going to approve anything like that.
Right, no, I mean, this is, yeah, okay.
It's sad, yep, it's sad.
Do respond to, so they, no need to write that, I guess, okay.
So this is our customer segment. See, all these terms, it's like, I, you know, it's like they, they don't click, you know, they're just like terms to me. I'm like, okay, what does that mean exactly?
That's, that's all right, it's great that you're learning this, Dee Dee, it's really, it's really useful.
It's just the jargon, it's like, okay.
Yeah, I know, and it's different jargon from design thinking jargon.
Right, you know, it's like, okay, tell me what you're talking about here, but it's business, it's business, you know, it's.
It is business, right, and it's good to immerse in business, good to understand it, I always.
It's like, as a teacher, as a teacher that's like so far removed from you, it's like the business world is like, okay, no, we have.
Well, and, but it shouldn't be, and this is what was my pushback to Jack's, to Chris Stiles. So if we're so far removed from this and somebody else is taking care, how do we, how do we, um, CSR, corporate social responsibility, that's what they say. So big companies can make money, they have social respons, social responsibility, corporate social responsibility that takes care of the things to show that they care, so it's.
But this is like, right, this is like when a school, when a business comes in to take over a school district, wants to run it like a business. Schools are not, you know, we're educators and we're not about, you know, the bottom line or it's like, we have kids, these are people that we're working with that we're trying to, you know, educate. So it's like, it, the business model, it's like.
Right, right.
We're schools, we don't usually have much money and we have a lot of things we deal with, a lot of kids, a lot of issues, parents, a whole bunch of stuff, you know? And it's like, so when, you know, to look at it, customer segment, okay.
I know, I know, it's, it's, it's interesting. And to think of, think of students as users, that's another strange thing.
That's what I have to do, yep.
Okay. Uh, any, besides the TEDx thing, Jack, for Chris Stiles, what was your takeaway?
Oh, he said so many good things. I, we need to watch that one back cuz he, he gave a lot of good feedback on where to start.
Yeah, I'm about to see that one.
I think I've, I, I, I put it on and it's getting ready, it's almost up.
And, and by Friday, I'm definitely gonna watch every single interview and then um, collect all the best quotes to put on a customer segment slide because I think that's super.
Yeah, yeah, really, really valuable, really valuable.
What did he, he, he talked about the nonprofit thing like Craig was.
Yes, he also brought it up, is it a nonprofit, said nonprofit, right?
We should be focusing on licensing, we should be focusing on gathering an audience right now and networking. And maybe, he said the first step should be homeschooling and reaching out to homeschool hubs and, yeah.
Yeah, we've heard a lot of that, we have.
How do those quotes look? Do they look better?
Yes, yes, they look better, much better. Do we wanna throw in the one, I mean, I don't know, I mean, if it's insights, you know, certainly, you know, like the Spanish teacher, you know, it would definitely, you know, she would use it because it's authentic.
Oh, that looks nice.
Authentic language kids are using, but also, um, if it was tied to the AP Spanish themes, you know, I don't know.
Sorry, guys, teacher, it should be teachers drive content.
Uh, no, they drive access, they don't drive content.
Okay, uh, but that's, okay, the teachers.
He said access, did someone else say?
Access to us, uh, Sullivan said teachers drive the content.
Okay, I'll add that one.
That's great, that's, that's.
A whole different.
Well, that's, that is very different because like, we all have standards to teach, so I don't know about driving content, you know.
Well, I mean, but we did say that if a teacher wants something, it can put in for it and can gather uh, and promote it to other stu, other teachers. And that's one way of getting information up there. So, and it's not, it's Scott Sullivan.
Scott Sullivan.
Scott Sullivan, he's curriculum director of curriculum.
Is, oh, public or private?
Public.
Public?
Yeah, he said his job as director of curriculum is to, to listen and to encourage the teach, so maybe that's why his, uh, his school district does so well.
What school district is that?
It's Estacada School District in Oregon.
Oh, okay.
It's a small school.
Uh, I think that, Jack, I think you should put down whatever he is superintendent or whatever, a superintendent, I think that's important.
Yeah, put down their titles, so he's, he is director of curriculum. Let me just make sure that he got that right.
Should I put everyone's title then on all?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, you could put, well, okay, whoops.
It's getting.
It's scary that there's pictures of everyone on there.
Yeah.
Oh, well, this is him, let's see. Uh, 2015, Estacada News, here we are, there's Scott. Oh, well, this is him. Let's see. 2015, Estacada News, here we are, there's Scott. Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. He was a social studies teacher, okay. So we have had two teachers direct.
Also, Hopkins said she would love to keep consulting down the road if you guys are open to it.
Cool. That's nice. I would, I think that's, that's how, put a number in there of, number of teachers who said they would pilot and continue down the road. Let's do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What, do you remember what Hopkins said, DeeDee? You said, if you gave me films that fit our AP themes?
Oh, that was, that was Tiffany Karo. Yes, she definitely saw the value in this, but especially for her, if they were, if the films were connected to the AP, you know, Spanish themes.
That was Tiffany?
Yeah, Tiffany Karo.
What, what did she say? Sorry.
She said, okay, go ahead.
Oh, oh, no, you said AP themes, brevity of films, cultural comparison, and she would pilot.
Yeah, oh, definitely, yeah.
That's what I have here in the main notes.
Yeah, I was asking for like a good quote, though.
Yes, she said that, she said that there was, she was, there was definitely value, okay, in these films, especially because they were authentic language that was being used, and if they were tied to the AP themes, Spanish themes.
And that's Tiffany, what's her last name?
K-A-R-O-W.
And she's an AP Spanish teacher?
Yes, AP Spanish teacher.
Yeah. Oh, you two are presenting today, remember?
Right, right. Yeah, I'm gonna have, I mean, I think that Jack should take the lead in the sense that I don't want to have that little fiasco with me trying to access it from my side, because I'll botch it up for sure. So I can, yeah, I can.
I'll introduce and stuff, and then you can talk about all the people you've interviewed.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. And then we, tonight, it's this, tell us how your value proposition appeals to or matches those customers. I think that's what we're doing right now, right?
Right, I think so.
We're kind of getting both of those slides together.
I think we are.
Yeah, I think we are with three and four. Slide three and four, we can say we combined them, you know?
Okay, these are all blue.
And Katie, I think that when, when it comes to this value proposition, I think our main value proposition was about, you know, this isolation or this cultural literacy, correct?
Yeah, yeah. So the pain point is the isolation breeding xenophobia and racism.
And our value proposition is that we can address this, correct?
And we provide immersion curriculum and materials for authentic cross-cultural education.
Can you bring, can you bring that slide over that I, that I put in the previous one that?
Yeah, the one, yeah, here, I'll do it.
The gains and pains.
The gains and pains, yeah. It's kind of, we say that at the end, at the beginning, so why do we need to say it a second time?
It's, it's worded a little bit differently. What do you, the business model, you mean?
Well, I guess we didn't get to see it a second time. Do you want it in number four?
Yeah.
Okay. We can fix that. Fix that, fix that. Oh, it ended up in number five, because, do they want to hear anything about our tests today?
They want to hear what our experiments are going to be, our proposed experiments.
Well, they.
To test the customer.
Okay, well, the experiment. Okay.
What'd you say, Jack?
You said, put Finding Felix in there, okay. And I can talk, I can talk about that, but I cannot talk about the other experiments where we're testing the markets that we thought we could go to, to understand how they might work.
Yes.
So we did that a little bit today. Okay, so the Finding Felix one is right here. So put that up here. Is that the next place? Is that where it goes in number four, the experiment?
No, it's actually five.
Slide five, okay.
Yeah, I think, I think we're combining three and four together. I really do. So which is, which is not a bad thing. I think it's a good thing. But just so, you know, I don't think we have the whole true to the, these number slides exactly, as long as we presented.
Well, it's, well, right, that's what Craig said, move around. So let's see if this runs.
And I think tonight, you know, the three of us, if they have questions, I think any one of us can answer the questions, you know, whoever's, like, we feel that's got the best answer for them, clearer.
Yeah. Uh-oh.
Meet Felix at about the time I met him in 2000.
I didn't mean to do that. I meant to find, huh. Okay.
Gordon Jack is a Los Altos librarian?
Correct.
Okay.
I was hoping I could find a quote from Margaret Bennett, who's the department chair for English Department there, but I can't find a good one.
Sorry. Not that. But, oh, yes, that's, he said, focus on curation, Chris Stiles. Yeah.
And I think she also, you know, it was very important to her and her department to make it so that it's, it works cleanly, so teachers don't have to puddle around with, you know, with trying to make it work, you know, something that's seamless for them. So the platform was important to her.
Alyssa Nizelli, what was her, what's her job title?
Oh, she's a social studies teacher, and she teaches Facing History and Ourselves at Lakewood High School. So she's a, she's a social studies teacher. And, you know, this is, to me, it's really interesting that there's 50% free and reduced kids at that school.
Yeah.
That, that's a segment, you know, that need also, it's underserved, you know, segment, which I think is really huge. I think, well, you know what?
God damn it, sorry.
You know, and also, I don't want to just say 50% free and reduced, but also, there's no diversity. I think sometimes when you think 50%, you know, free and reduced lunch, you think it's a minority population, but in this case, they're all white.
That's, that's right. And I think that's fascinating and great to point out. Really great, because when we, when we hear free and reduced lunch, then we often think of inner city, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah, rural.
Rural. I mean, we, I'd like that to surface more. And do we have a rural, Christina Kavanaugh was a rural school district.
Well, Alyssa, Alyssa Nizelli is, for sure.
Oh, where is she?
She's in Lakewood, Ohio.
Oh, good, definitely. I would note that, Jack, rural Ohio, rural Ohio.
Yes.
So these are all the positives.
Well, these are the, yes, these are the things that say we should move, to me, we interpret this as go for it, right? I mean, move forward with developing this thing.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Any others? Today, we had four.
Right.
Someone's calling me.
Okay.
I'll just take a mute.
Sure, I'll continue.
So tomorrow's Thursday, and then Friday, we have our final presentation. I don't know what that's gonna look like.
Oh, let me see if I have, if that is up.
And then I'm gonna have a glass of wine after that.
Oh, Vela, oh, this is her. She's, oh, she's not going to accept me. She's got LinkedIn. Let's see if she's got a... Oh, Laura, does anybody have, do you have LinkedIn Prime, Premium?
No, no.
I don't do it either.
Are you looking for her picture?
No, I'm looking for her contact. I wrote her via the Vail, Oregon. So she had, so she does have a doctorate in education, and she, ooh, she's committed to working rural areas. Good. Find her.
Who is she? Who is she?
She is a teacher at the Vail High School. This, it's the rural high school that I went to. And she's a new teacher there. She's, and if she's from Louisiana, she understands race issues. And, and so she's, she is teaching government and speech and things like this at this rural high school. And she could be one who could get me in there. And I've asked for a direct, I wrote her last night. And it's the high school that I went to. You'd think they'd be a little more interested, but not taking it up so far. So it's that political thing that we deal with.
So here it says that tonight, one of the discussion questions is, what, what is this MVP? You know, like, what MVP did we use during our interviews?
Well, the MVP is the website, the Screen 360 TV website.
Is that really?
Yes.
MVP?
Minimum viable product.
Oh, well, I'm not, okay, you, you talk about that, because that's not, if they ask us.
Which slide is that?
No, it just said, after slide six, it just says, what did you learn about your value proposition from talking to your first customers? And so one of the bullets is what MVP we used during our interviews?
Okay.
Would that be the Zoom, or what, I mean, what are they talking about?
Well, yeah, it's using the Zoom embedded, oh. That's not it. Oh, uh-uh. Sorry. I don't know where that Zoom went, that we just took with Chris Stiles.
Oh, no. I would like to see that, actually. I had to take a shower. I'm on, I'm three hours later than you. Oh, my God, I moved six.
Recorded, Jack, that's, okay. All right, sorry about that. I'll have to find it later with Chris Stiles. Okay. Let's go back to DeeDee. Let's go ahead and get back on our design for today. This is day three. Where did our day four go? Did I lose that? What's that? We don't need that right now.
Gavin knew some speak yet, and waiting for Gavin to speak.
Oh, good. All right, I guess I lost that. Day two, day three, let's go back to that. There's day three, thank you.
Yeah, four should be value proposition, so I'll move that to four. And then five is, what are your proposed experiments? You can put Finding Felix there.
Yeah, and then the others are.
And then we should just delete these end slides with Gordon Jack, and, because we, we don't need those on there.
Right, we've, yeah, 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 okay. I could just call this the completed experience. First is Finding Felix.
Yeah, and add more to that. And our last slide is, what did you learn about your value proposition from talking to your first customers? So we need to include the hypotheses that we have. And then, so add that, slide six, hypotheses, experiments, and MVP. So.
Okay, let's talk about that. Our hypothesis is, and we talked about that, DeeDee, that cinema, cinema provides travel-like experience.
Correct.
And.
Is that our hypothesis?
Our hypothesis is that teachers can teach their students through international TV, right?
Well, I think it's a little broader than that. Let me see. So, huh, this is coming from several, several decks back, that, that the schools need to provide education that provides young people with preparedness to be internationally prepared.
Yeah, but I think that doesn't come across as our hypothesis, though, because that one is, we're kind of like, we're dictating what schools should be doing, and I don't think that's where we want to be.
But then, the workforce is drawing, commanding that we, we have, that we are more cultural, culturally literate.
Right. But I think, I mean, I don't know, did we ever formally have a hypothesis? I don't remember.
No.
I don't remember.
We never formally had one, but we kind of.
Let's, let's, let's look at what, let's look at our drive and look at the decks that there are there. And I'm just, I need my tools to present them.
Because when I was thinking earlier today, and I was thinking about pains and gains, but I was thinking, you know, as the problem, let's say, is recognizing the importance of the need to, to incorporate cultural literacy into the curriculum and to schools. But I don't know if that's a hypothesis or not.
I should be able to tell you that, which I've been working on, and, and then we can conform it to now. So I just wanted to get that clearly from my deck.
Okay, well, I just put down the hypothesis, experiments, MVP results, and then the iterate part that I, I think that we're doing, but you guys can edit it. I have class right now at 1:30 to 3:20. I'll be back, I'll be back at 3:20, and we can keep editing it.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Have to send it off pretty soon, though. Okay, Jack, thanks a lot. Thanks a lot again.
All right, you guys.
See you later.
Have fun.
All right, hold on. Just need to, where is? Okay, we don't need that. I just need to clear it so I can think. Okay. Get frazzled sometimes when there's too many things going. And I have all of this, and I should be able to spill it out like this, and I, I can't, like, not yet.
No. That's why with the lingo here, it makes me really nervous, because it's like, okay, I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah, no, okay, here we are. All right, this is it, the screen, so this is the information, the background information. So let's look at our pitch. Okay, Screen 360 TV is an equal playing field where K-12 audiences spark global empathy and meet their peers through the film festival experience. That's the pitch. Okay. Okay, look at, look at this. Okay, then there's this one. So let's look at the other one. Okay, students face an increasingly globalized world as funding continues to diminish in schools and institutions serving the future workforce need an economical way of providing immersive experiences that prepare empathetic collaborative global citizens.
Perfect, perfect. I like that.
Okay.
Yeah, that, I think that's. Yeah, that, I think that's good.
Okay. And that's too much to say, but I need to have that memorized. You know, I I just need to be able, I mean, Rochelle was great when she asked me, what's your one-minute elevator speech? And this is it. "Students face an increasingly globalized world as funding continues to diminish." And, and we should, funding continues to diminish, and we're, we're faced with new realities. "Schools and institutions serving the future workforce need an economical way of providing immersive experiences that prepare empathetic collaborative global citizens."
And I even like your bullets right below it, too. I think this is all good. I think this is all good.
This is, yeah, okay, so...
I like it.
That means I should be able to grab it, or should I just, should I just screenshot it?
Whatever's easier for you.
Okay, because this is kind of what we have here.
I like this. I like this slide in here, I really do.
Where did it go? There we go. Ah. All right, this is not, where did it go? No more. We do have, you and I are on that interview. Sorry, where did?
What time? Yeah, what, 3:00?
It's at 2:00. Here it is, sorry.
2:30. You've got 2:30, I think, 2:30.
Oh, 2:30, right, okay, good.
2:30. Have to add 3:00 all the time.
I mean, this, this was the value proposition initially, but it's still our, it's still our, that was the first hypothesis that we put up.
Yeah.
That was the first hypothesis, okay.
It's, I think it's perfect, Katie, I do.
Okay. With that, the 56.6 million, okay. Day three.
Yeah, and I would, I don't know, I think I would, if you could highlight that, that the actual hypothesis here, you know, to make it stand out, that would be better, you know, so that that would be highlighted.
And which one does that, where does that need to go?
Your second bullet, just, you know, I would say bring the whole slide over if you could, and then highlight the actual hypothesis.
Which is, which is, which slide? Is that Slide 7?
The one that, oh, no, I think we just put this, let's just put this one.
Where do we put it?
It should be five. It should be part of five.
Five is experiment.
I'm sorry, it's six.
Six, okay.
Wait a second, hang on a second, hang on, let's see.
Oh, this is what, okay, it is six. "Jack wrote hypothesis: Teachers can teach their students through international films." Okay.
Yeah, and that's not, that's not developed.
It's too simple, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, this is, I appreciate Jack thinks quickly and gets it out there. That's, that's great.
Yeah, no, I think that one, that is perfect.
Okay. I'm gonna move this up. I'm gonna take this, actually. And put it here. Okay. And I'm gonna take that. This is our first, is that it? Yep. Okay. Okay. Okay, don't have my proposition, hypothesis. But then we changed it, right, good. This just feels like it's going backwards a little bit, and we talk about how it's changed. Okay.
Uh, what do you mean?
Just feels like we keep going back, which we should, but, and our hypothesis has changed a little bit.
Do you think it has? Where is it? What'd you do with it?
Well, I mean, this, here, here's our hypothesis, right? And, and then, and then we moved them together. Xenophobia and nationalism are on the rise, and we pushed those together, the 56.6.
And I think, see, I think that now that we've, you know, that we've talked and looked at it and looked at it again, that, you know, really, what you had in that one slide that you and I were talking about a minute ago, is I don't think that it's really, it's, it's in there, but the xenophobia and the nationalism, but I don't think we need to actually call it out like that, you know. I think the slide that we were just looking at, it does a better job. And as a result, the byproduct will be, right, that you're going to, you know...
That's what I thought, but I, it was, it was Craig who gave us that other one. Well, then just say it if we're talking about xenophobia and racism, then say it.
No, I don't think we need to do that. I think, I think that, I think that it works against us, you know, because people then are, are going to feel like you're, we're judging somehow, you know, and I don't...
Well, you're, you're right, you're right, and that's why I have a hard time saying it, because then you get people to shut, you shut them down, but so, that's something to ask Craig about. And we should ask point blank. When we say those words, what do you feel? And ask, ask our people that, you know, so, so that's a test. That is a test. So let us ask that here.
So, "Students face an increasingly globalized world," oops, where'd it go?
Right here. Okay.
Yeah, where is it? Yeah, can you just highlight that, that little segment?
This middle segment?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I'll do that right now. With a, have to do it with a shape. Let's do it with a shape. Let's do it with a nice round shape like this one. Oops, and then we have to make it transparent. Border color, we'll give it that nice green, and we'll make it nice and thick. And, oh, oh, we just want to highlight, really. Come back. This is highlight, all right, this is highlight, just a nice gold. That's wrong. Sorry. Oh, I'm doing it with a transparent fill. I just wanted to highlight that. Okay, hold on, I think what I can do... Border color tools, fill, transparent, there. And I wanted, I didn't need to do, I don't think it's gonna let me do that, all right. Highlight color. So I don't think I can highlight it because it's a... How about that? Is that a ring like that?
Yeah, that can work for sure, yeah.
That will, because it's, because it's a... Does that look blurry to you? Let me put it on...
Oh, yeah.
I'll put it on percent. How's that look?
Clear.
Clear, okay, good.
Very clear, very obvious.
The only reason it was blurry was because it was a PDF showing through.
Oh, I know, I was like...
I just had to, I just had to test. Okay.
I like this slide, I like it.
Good, 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 good. Okay, let's go back to the test areas. Okay. And so results, homeschooling is a niche. Okay, those are test questions. I'm just gonna make the smaller. Oops. Oh. Jack was moving fast so he could get out. That's, that's a difficult thing I noticed with the, the PhD that I was working with, who had to get her thesis done, so she had to make things, move things really fast according to her schedule, and it was difficult. And, and so we couldn't find that groove where maybe I was moving a little faster and she was moving a little slower.
Right, exactly.
Okay. Teachers, okay, teachers can can emulate travel, foreign places. That's why I use travel, but it's not necessary. Could emulate foreign, foreign places immersive through immersive international films. Okay, experiments, that, okay, asking teachers how they prepare their kids to be empathetic and aware and aware and empathetic young people ready for their workforce, okay. And what do we think? Culturally literate, yeah.
Right.
Their kids ready for the... How, how do teachers teach cultural literacy? I don't think, I mean, do, in your years as a teacher, did you use this term culturally literate?
Absolutely, we did.
You did, okay, good.
Yeah, for like 15 years, yes, we started like 15 years ago, yeah, definitely. In English, it was novels that they read, you know, and, yeah, and it was always about perspective in the social studies classrooms. Yeah, I mean, Lasalle's, it's like, they're like partners with Stanford, so we get a lot of, we, we had a lot of exposure.
So it was really a boon for you to step, not only for you, for them, and for you to step from step into the Palo Alto Mountain View School District. Wow.
Yes.
Yeah, I can imagine that the nation looks there. Ah, okay, and so MVP, Screen 360 results, homeschooling. Huh? Completely experiments, okay. I don't know, I don't quite know why that goes there.
Yeah, make, make the, make the screen capital S, okay, and then space between TV and results, yeah.
Is that what's supposed to happen on this page, the MVP?
And this one here is, "What are your proposed experiments to test the customer segment? Value proposition, channel, and revenue model of the hypothesis." So how are we going to test the, you know, the customer segment, the value proposition, the channel, and the revenue model?
The revenue model, we haven't tested yet. Testing revenue, we've been testing it through, okay, test. This, I, I don't, I don't want to lose his work, but I'm gonna put it someplace else for now.
And Katie, I think you're best here at presenting this slide for sure.
Okay. I just, ah, this is what makes me fall apart when the whole team isn't together, when the whole function isn't here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we're all, we're all together, we're all...
We're all, you're right, you're right, you're right, you're right, I mean, it's...
Yeah, I think it's smart to divide it up, I really do, you know.
That's normal, we have to. I'm just gonna create a page that says outtakes. And, okay. All right, experiments, and what that is, interviews with... Oh, come on, that's, that's a difficult thing within, it's it's hard to work within the the app itself, because it's sticky. It's just sticky, it's hard to do, and Jack was great with it. Okay. Interviewing teachers.
I'm gonna run to the bathroom, I'll be right back.
Okay. Okay. I don't know what, I mean, what, Jack's...
Do you live in San Francisco?
Not anymore, not, I mean, I'm in, I'm in Port, I'm in Portland right now.
Oh, my God, I had no idea.
Oh, no, so funny.
Right now?
I'm in Portland right now, just outside of Portland.
I had no idea. I thought you were in San Francisco. That is funny.
Okay. Two concepts. So to like... Because we, you know, we really, have we been actually saying that to people? We haven't been using the term xenophobia and in...
No.
No.
I think that, you know, I think we don't, I think we can speak to this without having to type all this on there, you know. So I think therefore, you know, your completely experiment, this finding Felix, I think that you can talk about it, you know. I think the very first, maybe just the very first, you know, sentence is all that's necessary, and then you speak to it.
Finding Felix and test, testing in, testing in other customer segments, completed, okay.
Right, I think, I think the first, the very first sentence in the box, and then the other, you can have a little side note to yourself or whatever, but I think that we don't need to type all this in.
Okay.
I really think, yeah, I think less is more, and just the bullet, you know, bullets, and then you talk about it.
Okay. Just, just these two. Testing, so with other considered markets. I mean, it's kind of, kind of what we are, we wrote up there. I have, I have a hard time with redundancy, but we have to speak it, you know. It's up there, we've been talking about it for days. Why do we need to repeat it?
Exactly, exactly.
Well, we do, okay.
Just take out, take out the testing hypothesis, and when it's... Just take out, take out the testing hypothesis, and when it's, when it's your turn to speak, just, just speak about it. Talk about, you know, why you were, you know, why you did the interview with Finding Felix and what you were doing, you were testing.
I, I think, I think, I think it helps me to have it there, I need the prompt.
Okay, but then, you know what you do, though, you start reading it.
No, no, I mean, you're right, you're right, but it's, it's so short, um, that I think it's, okay.
So what are we doing with this? What, what's your intention, do you think? Are we gonna show the clip, or what are we gonna do?
Um, if there's time to show the clip.
I think we have 12 minutes, okay, we have 12 minutes.
Yeah.
How, how long is the clip?
It's, uh, 30 seconds, oop, I have to.
How do you think maybe these films influenced your life?
And it gives you a feeling that the way you live isn't the only way possible, and that there are other, um, yeah, ways to think about life and. Yeah, even to make movies and.
In general, I think that international films will have an impact on, um, the way children look at the world. Watching, um, films like that, watching international films.
Can you hear it?
The ones we are talking about as they are shown at the Kinder Film Fest, I think definitely contributes to, to this kind of perspective, this kind of openness.
How long was that?
Oh, I didn't time it, but you know, it's perfect, it's a perfect clip, I don't think it, it can't, I'll time it, play it again, I'll time it.
Okay. Here we go, are you ready?
No, hang on, hang on, hang on.
I think it's.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, it's going. Oh, not yet, shit. There is a.
How do you think maybe these films influenced your life?
And it gives you a feeling that the way you live isn't the only way possible, and that there are other, um, yeah, ways to think about life and. Yeah, even to make movies and.
In general, I think that international films will have an impact on, um.
Oh shit, sorry. I, I, it's about a minute and 30, a minute 19, I think, here.
Okay.
How do you think maybe this film influenced your life?
And it gives you a feeling that the way you live isn't the only way possible, and that there are other, um, yeah, ways to think about life and. Yeah, even to make movies and.
In general, I think that international films will have an impact on, um, the way children look at the world. Watching, um, films like that, watching international films as the ones we are talking about as they are shown at the Kinder Film Fest, I think definitely contributes to, to this kind of perspective, this kind of openness.
Okay, so that's one minute, yeah, 11:27 to 11:29, but.
We have time, we have time.
I think so, so I think. I think it would be good, cause it would be stupid if we don't use it.
I think so too, yeah, let's use it.
Okay. All right.
So that is, you know, we, we have a hypothesis, and one of the discussion questions for Slide 6 is, you know, is us saying, here's what we thought, okay? This is our hypothesis, and here's what we thought, you play the clip, okay? And so that just validates what we thought, correct, the impact of, you know, them watching this film? And then the experiments are, so here's what we did, our experiments, so, um, maybe that's the experiment part of it there, right there. So here's what we did.
Yeah.
Do you think?
Yeah, and I would say, but this is not what we did in class, on one hand, I think they want that. But I could, I could speak to that, that we are. In addition to interviews that we did early, we, we, we continue to interview teachers about how they prepare culturally literate children, students for the workforce.
Right, so last night, the lecture was on experiments, remember, so, um.
Tell me what your takeaway was.
Hang on a second, um, I took notes. It says, pick, pick experiments that produces strong, the strongest evidence, well, there's one right there, that's very strong evidence, okay? Identify what you want to learn, uh, from this type of user, that definitely mark, you know, that's a check mark there. Decide what visual aids will help you learn, what kind of, what kind of demos, 30 second snippets or a video, there it is, right there, okay, that helps us. Plus, we have, we have videos of teachers, you know, with their interviews.
Right.
Design, design an experiment, what, what hypothesis do we want to prove? Uh, who are, what's the target, the participants, and how many participants do we want to run the experiments with? Well, would you say that our experiments are the interviews and what we got out of the interviews, or what are our experiments?
Yeah, yeah, but the experiments we're doing now, for, that I'm doing today, for instance, are, are testing those ones that, um, you know, that I thought, you know, the other revenue streams, which should we do first? So what we're, we're trying to do is to find which, where to start, what's, where's the best place to start, where best place to set that cornerstone? And so, uh, testing the others beside, just to make sure those are not, you know, so that we can throw them out. So that's what we're, we're going down, the customer section, and throwing those out. You know, and, and so. Just asking those questions, um.
Well, and I think for the discussion with our Slide 6, basically is, here's what we thought, this is our hypothesis. Uh, so here's what we did, so you've got the film clip, and we did the, we did the interviews to find out what, what teachers needed in order to, you know, use this product, okay, what would make it desirable for them to use it in their classrooms, right? So we got that information from them, we, we have it, we have that information.
That's here, yeah.
What MP did we use during our interviews? Obviously, you're saying 360 or Zoom, right? We, we.
Should we put up, maybe our, our MVP, make a screen of our MVP if we need to, I think that you should do that.
Actually, yes, because we referred everyone to it before we interviewed.
Right, 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 right.
Right.
Okay, let me make a screenshot of that. Oh, this is the lady Regina who we're going to interview, so wanna come, she actually, she uses Weebly also. We have to ask her if she's been having a hard time with her Weebly, I haven't been able to get Screen 360 TV up, um. Lately. Is it gonna come up today? I'm clicking on it now. Oh, something's happening with Weebly, I think.
Oh.
I haven't been able to bring it up today, I have a screenshot of it. Not the whole.
I used to be an EL teacher also, yeah.
Did you look at their site?
What site?
Uh, the interview for 230 Regina.
I, I looked at it, yes.
Oh, you did, okay, and, and that's what you get, it's, it's EL.
It's EL, I taught, I taught English, that was my first, my first teaching was in EL, yeah.
Okay, I'm looking up. A screenshot of Screen 360 TV is what I'm looking for, and I have something in the graphic design, which will be here. Close enough, this is, I can build from here. Up, day three. And. This one. Can you, are you able to get to Screen 360 TV? Can you see the, could you make a screenshot, actually? Can you see that on your computer?
Oh, you've got it right here, whoops.
Well, I, I have a version of it, but I mean, that's all we need, you're right, um. Something like that, does that work?
Yes. I think this is key, we, we did this, and they all went to this first, and then we started our interviews, every person checked it out.
Yeah, right, well, that's, that's our, that's our MVP.
That's brilliant.
It's the website.
Brilliant.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. This is our website, MVP, all right. David, Canada Day. What is this doing? Oh, no, we don't do that. Okay. Oh, it's Canada Day.
Oh, really?
Getting a note here, um, oh, right, that's what we wanted. Portal, P O R T L E, port, no, portal, that's it.
No, no, isn't it?
It's P O R T A L, right, but I'll say, and, um, screening room. And with embedded Zoom, or whereby. Okay, oh, drink of water, that's a really good idea. Drink of water! Okay, let us do that, build this up a little bit, give it a block, and make it blue.
Screening room.
Yeah, screening room, I have to separate that, huh, not a transparent, I want this color, and I want that color, and screening room. Okay. Uh, oh, oh, right, it also has program and. We do have with, with, um, one of those, okay. Better than, okay, and it has, um, um, program guide.
Yeah.
Schedule.
I don't think you get to write it all out.
Well, oh, okay, I mean, it's just, just the things that are on, program guide, schedule, these are all the things that have been prototype. You haven't, teacher's guide, um, guide. Guide, guide, it's a, it's a guide, guide, it's a guide for guides, guide for guides? Or guides.
Now, this, now, this is helpful, it is helpful.
Yeah, cause I haven't shown that to you yet, yeah, you haven't seen that program, I'd schedule, guide for guides, which I can, um, send to.
You've done a lot of work, it looks really good, by the way, I looked at it more today.
Oh, cool, cool.
You've done a lot, you've done a lot.
Oh, it's been, been all, you know, nine years, eight, nine years, and. But I also need, there's so much, I recognize that it's hard to present it, um, I, I can do it little by little, but it just needs, to go any further, I need help, I need help, and like Mr. Rogers says, I need to find the helping hands.
That is true, though, that's true.
Right, okay.
You have a good foundation, that's very good.
I think so, I think so, thank you, all right, um, is this enough to send to Jin?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Good, all right, then I, I had a hard time sending it to him, it still doesn't feel like it goes to the right place, but I, I'll put it in there again, see, I, I send it, uh, move. So here, how to open folder in a new tab, I don't need to do that, I want to go to. And it has to be creating a new folder in my drive, I don't want to do that, so how about here, see document status, all changes saved to drive. It's not ready for offline use, so maybe that's what I need to do, no, not there. May, I made a copy yesterday.
Good.
Okay, I need to export it.
Copy, yeah, make sure.
I'll export it. Entire presentation, okay, making, okay, my drive, share with the same people, yep. Copy comments, good.
What are our channels, what are the channels?
The, how we present our ideas, so it's through the MVP.
Okay, that's tomorrow, tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, so. Download, I'm gonna make a PDF document. And that's going in our whole Hack for Recover, our daily. Daily, and this is day three. And I'll upload that to Jin. And then. Okay. And that is, where is that? Okay, I separated it, I think. Okay. 2:10 almost. Drink of water, just a second to take a drink of water.
Yeah.
You know what? Why don't we take, have, have you eaten anything? I haven't eaten anything, and I need to take a break and come back in 2:00, to 2:30.
That's a great idea, I like it.
Okay, I'll see you in a bit.
2:30.
Like 2:30, bye-bye.